Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get this meeting late afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:37. Rule call, my president, Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez, not present.
Ms. Lopez.
Here.
Mr. Cryer.
Present.
And Mr. Nada, not present. At this time, we open public comment. If there's anyone from the public they'd like to make public comment, maybe in a form. And I do have one here from Mr. Guzmán.
Buenas tardes, Mesa Directiva Directoras, Maestros. Mi nombre es Sergio Guzmán, tengo dos hijos aquí, uno en primer año y uno en quinto año. El propósito mío de estar aquí hoy es para someter mi aplicación para ser parte de la Mesa Directiva. Quiero contribuir y trabajar con la Mesa Directiva, maestros y padres de familia, en no solo nada más en mantener esta escuela, sino también el cómo poder extender esta escuela, que haya más salones de clase, a lo mejor otros grados. Esa es mi intención de estar aquí, esa es mi intención de participar en esta Mesa Directiva. He participado en diferentes Mesas Directivas con General Family Union y en otras Mesas Directivas. Actualmente trabajo para una charter high school para adultos en la cual nos enfocamos en encontrar a los jóvenes que decidieron salirse de la escuela y animarlos a que regresen y obtengan su diploma de high school. Ese es mi trabajo actualmente, es una 5-1-3 y por eso estoy aquí. Espero que tomen mi aplicación en consideración.
Any other public comments? Let's go on to three, a closed session. There's no report, back to the closed session. Let's go on to the approval of today's agenda. I think everyone's had an opportunity to look at the agenda. And the motion to approve that, please. So move to the second. Second, Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those yes. And passes the minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to look at the minutes for March 22nd and April 17th?
Yes.
Any comments, any changes of minutes? And if not, then can I have a motion to approve the minutes for those two dates?
Absolutely.
Okay, a second. A second, Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let's move on to number five, Business Services and Presentations, Financial Reports from Donna. Okay, something new?
Yeah, let's grab them.
Just in case. And just a reminder while we're getting Donna on the phone, the documents for today's meetings are on the Chromebooks. So make sure you follow with us for the separation. While we get that together, I just realized that the public comment was in English and I don't know if there's someone who would like that translated. We tried to attempt to translate Mr. Guzmán's comments, public comments, if anyone needs that translation.
I speak Spanish.
Okay. I wonder if we can have access to our translator? And I don't know if you've heard Mr. Guzmán's.
I could like if you want the English.
Oh, if you would like, yeah, that'd be great. Someone else can hear your comments as well. Thank you.
Welcome again. My name is Sergio Guzmán and the purpose for me to be here is to submit my application to be part of the board. I participated in different boards, once with the General Family Union. I act as a secondary treasurer for eight years. Now I'm working with a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3). There is a charter adult high school. So we find those students, for some reason, they not finished the high school. So we encourage them to come back and finish their education. So I'm here again and hopefully you guys take into consideration my application.
Question for you. Well, just a question just popped up. How many times a month do you meet with your board when you're?
Once a month.
With conflict with the meetings that we have with our board?
I don't think so.
How did we do this before?
Yeah.
You're right on the meeting.
Hi Donna, you sent board here, ready for your report, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
You're all doing great, thank you.
All right. Okay, well, let's, do you want to start with the balance sheet?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna put John speaker.
You're on speaker.
So for the line of involved. Cash in all accounts combined is $1,254,474.50. The accounts receivable for 9/42, that is medical benefits due from Mike Roberts. The employee receivable, that's the balance on the advance that was given that will be repaid by June. And also the summer 1/25, that is the July premium that was paid in advance by Oasis. But the employees will have paid back by June. For your prepaid expenses, the $40,452. Got that up here. $12,114 of that is your utility deposit. All the rest of it, there's advertising, subscriptions, retainers, membership. All of those, it looks like, the retainers are, they will be reduced as they're used. All of the rest of the memberships and conferences will be extended in July. On the liability side, all of those are just the normal payroll liabilities. That, the state unemployment that gets paid quarterly, the workers' comp. That is the reconciliation, that we keep a reconciliation going because we know whether Oasis is going to owe at the end of the year or whether they will have a refund. At this point, it's still showing a refund, but then by the time April, May, June, there may not be a refund or there may just be a small refund. The 1-6 withholding, that's the summer pay that just paid out in July. And both the Trans-American, Aflac, both of those were paid in April. So are there any questions on the balance sheet?
Any questions from board?
No.
No Donna, we can move forward to the next meeting.
The income statement? Okay. Let's see. On the income statement, all of the federal and state revenues have been paid on schedule. The INLU tax transfer prior year, the 23/9/24, that's what Alabazal owed. You know, it's the prior year adjustment that's done at P1 and they paid that in April, so that's paid in full. All the other state revenues and federal revenues are paid to date according to schedule. And the other local revenues, as you can see there, well, the other local revenue prior year, that was refund from UCEM for the prior year portion of the retreat. That's what the notes say down there. And the rest is all just, your fundraising is all, let's see, it looks like. Yeah, it looks like you're going to probably meet all of your fundraising budgets, so that's good, that looks real good. Yeah, your revenues are looking pretty great. The expenses, the salaries are all right about where they should be, about 70% to 75%. So those all look real good. Your expenses, it looks like you're probably going to go over on instructional expenses, instructional materials, but probably your supplies in stores. It looks like those are probably going to go over budget a little bit. Hopefully not too much. Your capitalized equipment, there's still a budget left, but I don't think there's going to be any more purchases through the year, so gotta be fine. What is it on to your? Looking at everything, everything seems to be, I'm looking through travel conferences, dues, membership, family leases, all of that looks right in line. Your professional services, your legal services have gone over budget. And advertising employment fees have gone over budget. Your staff development, it shows over budget in one area, but you have plenty of budget left, so that, there's no issue there. Everything else looks good, I don't see anything that stands out that I see we need to discuss. You have any questions on anything that you see?
This is for money back, actually. Are we purchased, are you going to purchase by voting by now?
Yes, everything that we needed to purchase for the year has been purchased. The only purchases we usually make is in June and that is for the next school year. And it depends on when we receive it, that's when it's paid for. So if we receive it before June 30th, then it's booked for that year. But if we receive in August or July, then it's going to next year.
But not for the academic year, you pretty much have a.
For the academic year is all covered, it's all taken care of, no need for additional.
Okay Donna, work it.
Okay. Did you want to discuss anything else? Did you want to talk about the budget at all or have you guys already had a conversation about that?
For this year or for next year?
Next year. Juanita and I have done a little bit of preliminary work. Did you talk to them about that, Juanita, or no?
No, we haven't talked about the next academic year yet. What's on the agenda right now is the salary schedule adjustment of, is it mine? Who says it? Let's see if that helps. We have this new. So Donna, we have not had a conversation yet. What's on the agenda is the salary schedule for teachers and also for a 2% increase for staff, for other staff for the next academic year. So there has been no discussion on the budget for next year yet. That conversation I'm sure is going to happen soon because we are starting to work on the LCAP and all of that. But we did have a brief conversation about that, you and I, recently, so.
So are there any other questions for Donna from the board?
No.
No.
No. Okay Donna, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, you know what, actually before you get off the, because we will be discussing the salaries. But you've already had that conversation of money back, so you'll be able to answer any questions that we might have from here, pretty much? I only.
As far as the salary increase for next year?
Sustainability of that throughout the next year and so on, if the budget will.
I'm sorry, say that again?
To sustain that, those salary increases based on appropriate preliminary budget?
Well, if, in fact, cuts are made to the instructional, the classified instructional aid. And that's what we discussed when we were working on the budget in order to sustain the increases for the teachers and the other staff, that would mean you would need to cut back on the instructional aid.
So it's a budget conversation to where we.
Yes, it's definitely a budget conversation.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
You have a good evening, thanks.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too. Okay, let's move on to a report from our OCC.
Hello, oh yes. All right, hello guys, good evening. Okay, so for OCC, we had our meeting the week, the Tuesday after we came back from spring break. And we got some feedback on the gila baskets. Although we did good, I know some parents' concerns were that they started off at a too low of a price. So we took into consideration all their feedback in regards to starting the price higher next year and going from there. Because some parents were disappointed in the outcome of the pricing event and, you know, so. We took their comments and stuff into consideration, so we will do that for next year. And then the All Families Superhero dance will be this Friday and that's at 6:30. So if you guys can come, you're more than welcome to come and you can dress up. And that should be fun and it is free. And that's one of the things that OCC does to build community. And so we do not charge for families to come in and we just sell desserts and juice and water. And then we just decorate it and then this theme is superheroes. It's going to be here, yes, at 6:30. And then we'll have, teacher Jacob is going to do kid appropriate music. And then we have a little tiny photo booth that my husband went ahead and let us use his photo booth, which is really nasty. So I'm excited. And then the evening assembly will be on Monday at 6:30. And then, let's see, sorry about that. The bank protocol, we still need to get with you guys in regards to our bank protocol. Thank you for approving our bylaws. So that's the last step in our bylaws is the bank stuff. All those odds and ends of how, when, where, and the rules of how we can spend. So whenever you guys are free, we can make some time and then meet with our new treasurer and myself and our secretary and then we can go over that. And then I know we talked at our OCC meeting about bingo night. I presented that to the OCC members and I didn't get anybody to want to take it full on. And so unfortunately, that's not something that OCC is going to be able to do. And let's see, what else? Oh, and then I know that we talked about the volunteer removal to be presented at OCC. We couldn't open it up and then I just got some feedback some parents couldn't open it up on Parents Per Year. And I tried to also, because I know that was part of the thing that you guys had asked to be presented at our last meeting. And then coming up, we have teacher appreciation week, which is May 8. And we have a barbecue runage sale, community fair on the 19th of May. And then field day is June 13th. And so those are the latest and greatest OCC meetings and that's it for now. Any questions?
What are you doing for the teacher appreciation?
We have not discussed it. Last year I ended up, well, we had a luncheon, the president from, before me. We had a salad bar, she, you know, she asked me if I could help out, I did a salad bar. And then on my own with a couple of parents, I collected snacks and coffee. And then every day that week I had like bananas and oranges and granola bars and coffees and good creamers and the teachers loved that. So I'm leaning more towards a week of all that stuff because I think that that was really helpful. And I got a lot of really good feedback from teachers and staff members that that was nice going in there, grabbing something healthy and it was always just replenished. And of course, we had little brownies and chocolates, you know, not all healthy stuff, but a little bad thing here and there. But they really liked them, they appreciated the carry cups, they were able to make good coffee. And so I think that it's not just for the day, I'd like to do it a week. And so I'm going to present that to the OCC members and hopefully they're good with it and then we can carry them.
Do the students do anything special?
I mean, certainly not that we plan. We typically do like one something from time to time from the office. But they'll bring things like, but we announce it.
They don't.
They don't, they don't.
But there's nothing organized.
Yeah, I probably can post something on Parents Per Year. Maybe you want to donate to our snack week for the staff and the teachers. I'm pretty sure there'll be a lot of parents who'd like to do that.
Or you work with your child at home to make a card as a family?
Yeah, that would be nice, too.
Get crafting.
Yeah.
Something, I'm just. Get involved, get the parents and children involved in presenting.
Yeah, I could definitely send something on Parents Per Year. Peter, do you have a question?
When does your presidency or your term end?
My term does not end until our next year. I still have one more year, the rest of this year and then one more year.
Okay.
Yeah. Why do you not want to spend that? Why do you bet up?
Something cute.
How much he has to look forward? How much he has to look forward to?
Oh, after that, I still have him for a while.
Your first item, I had a question, but all the others voted out. What was your first item?
My first item was the gila basket.
Oh yeah, oh, what if you, did they consider changing the, I didn't look at them because was it anyone to vote out?
Yes.
Did they change maybe the increments you could go by?
Yeah, so Janine, that's her baby. So she does the gila basket, she puts it together, she collects all the stuff. And so I think she takes a certain percentage and that's who she starts the bidding at. But a lot of parents' concerns were they spent a lot of money and the basket didn't sell for as much as they put in and that was just one parent. And so it's understandable, I mean, if you spent $110 and it sold for 40, it's kind of like I should have just donated $110 to the classroom. So it makes sense, especially since the money was going back to the classroom. And so, you know, I've got a couple of parents who, you know, thought about that. And so I think next year, maybe starting it higher instead of like $10 or $20, maybe starting it at 30 or 40 bucks. And then maybe $3 increments or $4 increments instead of 2, yeah, or 5 because it's going back to the classrooms. And so we're going to adopt that as far as the classroom baskets from now until I'm done. They will definitely go back to the classrooms. And the teachers were very appreciative of that and, you know, I think that's the right thing to do. And then Science Camp got $1,071 from what we were able to get from the mystery box and the jewelry. And so that would too help pay for Science Camp for the students.
Good. Thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you, anybody else? Thank you.
Wait, sorry, are we allowed to ask questions? I guess for the baskets, would you be able to do where the parents get pictures and they could maybe sell them? Like if anybody's interested in bidding outside?
The problem with that is we tried to get all the baskets done a week before. And then people don't bring stuff and even this time that we did a week before, we were still getting stuff and that's what led to the mystery box.
Yeah, we just talked to some of the parents and they were just, you know, financially from donating, from bringing food, from donating to the basket.
Yeah, and then we do get outside vendors also, Janine's really good about getting that. But yeah, I mean, unfortunately, you know, we try and that's how we learn, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the next, I had discussions, public hearings. Let's get an update about the kitchen remodel.
Okay, so we have new proposals at this time. And we are, I'm asking one of the contractors to update his proposals so that it's apples to apples. His design was different from the other design, so of course the cost difference wasn't too significant. But I wanted to make sure that the design and the cost, the design was the same so they could bid on the same in the materials. So I asked him to please revise it based on that design. And he was going to be back to me, he said in the next week or two. The other contractor, I have later attempted to have him submit his proposal, he did come in to look at the project and I have not had a better response from that, the other contractor. So it looks like we only have two proposals at this time. And at the next board meeting, I'll be asking the board to allocate funding for that project because I had no idea what the cost was going to be. We're looking at a range of about $40,000 at this time to replace everything, with the exception of the refrigerators and the kitchen and the stove. So cabinets, flooring, sink, everything is going out, is coming out. And only the stove, which is very new. We actually, in the proposal, I'll take it back, in the proposal, they are proposing a six burner stove. Because he said us that the four burner stove doesn't help when you cook too more than one item. Which makes sense, she's the cook, so she knows what she needs. So it's already included. So we could leave the one we have, it's very new, or it could be sold and use those funds to, which wouldn't be a whole lot but to pay for the kitchen remodel. But it is about $40,000 at this point. And I'm hoping to get the third proposal. But if not, then we will most likely just go with the two and select the best, hopefully with the same design. So that we are looking at the same set of plans. And that's what we're looking at at this time. I asked all three contractors to please check the CDO Salinas for the permitting process to make sure they have included, maybe not the permit itself, the cost is separate, but certainly the process. So they take that into consideration. I also let the CDO Salinas know, oh, CDO Salinas built a plan in the apartment that we are in the process of requesting two permits, one for the HVAC and one for the kitchen. So I kind of gave them a heads up of what's going to be coming either way from Oasis. So that's what we are at this time. Any questions?
So the primary use of the kitchen is for?
We use it for enrichment, for Wednesday enrichment. We use it for life after school, when we do, Isella does the cooking and the preparation of the food. And it's used for other purposes as well. So for main enrichment and life after school program, cooking for the children who stay in the program. That's the main use.
Any questions from anyone else?
Yeah, and I just want to remind, and the board may remember this, the committee may not. That kitchen that's in there is a donated recycled kitchen. That kitchen that's in there is a donated recycled kitchen. So the cabinets are falling apart, since donated. And so it's in need of an upgrade. And the floor is pretty outdated and old. So we're looking at updating that for that reason. And having like a two sink in there and possibly an island. But if we can't afford the island, then we have this portable stainless steel island that we bought. And that will do, that's just as well. But having an island would give us additional storage. So we're going fancy somewhat, but durable for sure, durable. That's what I was looking for.
Okay, any other questions for the board?
As you said, I've tried to use that room to teach children. It's very difficult.
Okay, thank you for pointing out the update. This one to 6.2 salary increase for all staff for the next academic year.
Okay, so I had two phone conferences with Donna. Donna Strong manages the books. And so in our conversation, we talked about what we anticipate for the next academic year. And we discussed where we can cut back and so we can balance the budget based on nine classes, not based on 10. And remember, I mentioned before that we will only offer nine until we can find a 10th teacher. We can't promise to open up a 10th class without a teacher. So at this time, we just can be planned. But if we have the 10th class, we still have to make some adjustments regardless. And of course, the impact, the financial impact would be less if we have the 10th class starting in August. Or hopefully in June, we can have that class put together and have a teacher assigned to that class. So we looked at the 2% increase for staff members. And the budget would sustain a 2% increase. It's not a huge impact on the budget for the different positions that we have. And the reason why I have this separated in the 2% for staff and 3% for teachers is because our salary schedule needs to be a little more competitive to what the districts offer out there right now. With the 3% for teachers, we would be like $1,000 less than what districts pay. Remember, districts have a bigger budget. Also, districts have more revenue sources than Oasis. So we wouldn't be too far off from that. Also, all the charter schools have asked for our salary schedules and my proposals to the board because they're doing the same thing. They're all trying the same thing. It's all recruiting from the same pool of applicants. They're all trying to recruit the same people. And as a matter of fact, I made an offer to an applicant and she went with another charter school in Monterey. So because of the commute for her, it's going to be better. So we're all looking at the same factors and the same elements when interviewing and hiring and when looking at compensation. And in the compensation formula, we also have to take into consideration STIRS. STIRS, the Teacher Retiring System, which goes up every year and it's going to hit the 19, 20% in the next couple of years. So we have to take that into consideration and project beyond the one year. So the last time there was an increase for teachers was two years ago. And there was a really nice 5% increase. And that brought us closer, that made us more competitive to what's being offered around the area, around our area. I mean, here in Santa Rita, Avisal, Sabina City, that's what I'm looking at. And I was also looking at districts in South County and North County. I never looked at districts like Carmel and Pacific Grove, as I mentioned before, it's not competitive. It's not, they're basic A, they're not ADA based. So the 2% for all staff would not be a huge impact. We can sustain it. And for teachers, 3%, that's what I'm asking the board to consider. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
So the schedule says 3% down, 4% across.
The 4% across remain the same, meaning that the 4% across from before was the same. The only 3% was in the initial 3% for all over different areas. So the 4% across did not change from what it originally was. So if you looked at the one from currently from 1618, it's a 4% across. But if you look down, it's a 3% from year to year.
Yeah, but then you wouldn't need to keep the 4% across, would you?
No, well, that doesn't change what I mean. The 4% across doesn't change from what we have to what I'm proposing. The only thing that changes is the year-to-year experience.
Then my suggestion is to remove it from this one because this is suggesting that this new one has a 3% down and a 4%.
Yes, that is not correct. That's not, yeah, that's not, that's what was approved originally. I see. Yeah, no, the 4% across is what?
That didn't change.
That did not change.
So then it's just a 3%.
It's only from year to year going down.
3% down.
3% down, yes. Also, I want to point out that in this one, something new that is not in the current one is the stipend of $1,000 for anybody who has a doctorate. We have been blessed, lucky enough to have a teacher who has a doctorate degree. And as we know, three to five years, sometimes seven years to get a doctorate. And it would take you about 25 years, if not 30, to add a $1,000 rate stipend to recoup your investment in the program. That's just, that's not why we do it, right? We don't do it for the money. But what we do want to do is compensate our teachers and show them appreciation in this way. Saying thank you for investing three, five, seven years of your life and money to get a doctorate because that makes them more qualified.
So would maybe a little bit more for the doctorate degree than the?
I had, I had $1,500 originally. And then I thought, well, it's not a whole lot, but $1,000 is better than nothing. So 1,500 is what I was originally proposing before, and then I brought it down to $1,000.
So you're not going to get a lot of them, so if you want to be competitive, because that's the reason why I would propose 1,500.
1,500, which is what, okay.
I mean, it doesn't.
It's only 500 and we have one.
If you're seeking out those doctors.
Yeah, 1,500, like I said.
Make it, make it, doesn't?
It doesn't break the budget. It does not impact the budget. The other difference which I want to point out to you all is the years of experience. Prior years of experience, most districts are offering 15, 19, or every year you come in with, 29. And Oasis was offering seven. I'm proposing that we offer our teachers eight prior year, prior teaching experience. So that we can attract experienced teachers and not discourage them from applying. Because if they have 15 and they come in, they start at level nine instead of level 16 in a different district. So that's the other one. Again, we can make it 10 if we wanted to, but from seven, I jumped it up to eight for credit.
I think that's a good idea.
And did I get to?
To jump it up, increase it.
To increase it to eight or 10?
10 would be great.
10?
So if you come with 10 years of experience, we're going to count those 10 years of experience.
Yes.
Versus currently, currently it's only?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, so they'll place at eight.
Gotcha.
So that may discourage some highly experienced teachers.
So in that case, the column just goes down, continues with the increases all the way down?
All the way down, yes. So if they come in with 10, there will be a step experience in eleven, because they will be at level here. So that would attract, definitely open up the window of options for those who are seeking for employment somewhere else. Those who have less than, it's not a problem for them anywhere, but those who have more than, it's certainly.
And how does that, but then moves the salaries down in each one of the columns potentially? If they come with 10 plus years of experience?
It just moves them from level nine to placing them on a level 11.
Right, but there's a salary increase.
It would be an increase for them coming in, but it's not an increase to the schedule. It's an increase for them.
I'm talking about budget-wise.
It will cost more.
Cost, it will cost more. So because you're giving that extra two years of credit, you need to anticipate that there are going to be people here that have 10 plus years of experience. And it will, it will definitely impact your budget.
It will impact the budget because we would have to place, let's say, right now, a teacher who was placed at that, we would have to jump that person down farther, yes. That would have an impact in the budget. But also take into consideration, for instance, I'll give you a good scenario. If they are placed at, we're just going to look at one person at $62,000, I'm looking at column E, E9. So if you look at E9, that's $64,000. Well, let's say that's the first year, okay? And it's going off of eight years, so 64. But if they come in at 11, that's $66,000, so the $2,000 more. Really, the impact in the budget is 2,000 and it's not?
And just say?
And we don't get that many.
Okay.
So we get one or two.
Okay.
And right now, we would have one that would fall under this category, emplacement. Everyone else has been placed accordingly based on what they came in with. So no one would be, there'll be no retro for anybody except for one member. So the difference would be a couple thousand dollars for two extra years of service.
Yeah, I'm just, I simply make a comment that if, because this impacts the future. It doesn't impact anything that we're doing right now.
Yes.
And you don't know what happens in the future. You might get all the teachers that don't want to be in the other school district that have the 10 plus. And then it's going to impact your budget, not what we approve right now, but the future. So just things to consider.
Definitely, it would. And it will, yeah, impact the budget in the future, yes. So and again, the 2% for all our staff members, as I discussed with Donna, the impact is minimal. Only if we consider reducing the number of instructional assistants. Right now, the cost of instructional assistance is $180 plus, thousand dollars, close to $190,000. So we definitely have looked at that and have considered what adjustments we need to make. And that's going to be discussed various meetings soon. The next one is, I mean, that he like coming up in other meetings, making these recommendations. So that we can have a balanced budget. And in that consideration, I also am showing you on page 18 of the attachments. So if people scroll down to 18 or up, which depends on where they are, 18 or 84. Those are the administrative salaries. There's a 3% and a 2%. The 2% is very conservative. The 3 is put in at the same rate increase as teachers. But in the five years of prior teaching experience remains the same, that there was no changes there in the five years prior teaching experience for that. And the 2% is sustainable, the 3, it may be stretching it. And then if you look down on page 19, the next page, Office Manager, Office Manager, Administrative Assistant and Secretary Kirk. At this time, we have the proposal at part-time for Secretary and Kirk. We don't think we need a full-time person in that position. There's no salary schedule at this time. And these are the proposed to start somewhere. When I did the calculation here, we're starting the 2 or 3%. I'm starting that position, Office Manager, at 20, 20 per hour. And the Administrative Assistant at 17. And the other one, I believe, I placed it at 11 or 12, part-time. So going to be starting.
And how do you, and the same with years of experience, where they come to their?
It says up to five years here, up to five years, up to five years of prior. It says prior experience in the same or similar position and or duties. Because sometimes the title changes, so the duties may be somewhat aligned. And this would be something new. We haven't had one. So I can make it clear that this is not an increase to anything. This would be a starting point for how I calculated this. I contacted all the charter schools and asked them what their similar position is getting paid at this time. And then I asked Donna, since she manages about 10 charter schools, what those similar positions will be making. And then I kind of had to start somewhere based on the proximity of those charter schools to Oasis. And she gave me the, let's say, Office Manager at 30, but it was in San Francisco. This could be expected, right? But if it's Salinas, that's different. Office Greenfield is different.
And you said you have this written down as a part-time based on?
The Secretary and Kirk, yes, Office Manager and Administrative Assistant at full-time. Those positions need to be full-time. Because they have reports and responsibilities that are in need of someone being here. From one of them, 7:30 to 4, I believe. The other one is 8 to 4:30, something like that. So we have them at full-time.
And full-time would be how many hours a week?
At 40.
Forty.
Over 30, for sure, over 35, we keep them up, but they're at 40. All of them are at 8 per day right now. So if you do, and also it's 200, when I did the math, it was 210 days, 210. We'll talk about budget into the lights go out. Saving money, basically. So we took 210. And the reason why it's five extra days, and I'm sure Eric can attest to this, is Office Manager and Administrative Assistant have to work extra days when we're off because there is attendance report with CalPads that is due in the middle of vacation time and payroll. That is due in the middle of everything and accounts payroll, bills that need to be paid. So they need to come in at least five extra days during the school year. When everybody's off, they need to be here doing CalPads, attendance reports, getting signatures from the superintendent and all that good stuff. And accounts receivable, getting all the bills and getting those paid and payroll. Because now they get, our payroll now is twice a month instead of one month. So that's why they need to be more off there.
Well, any questions from the board?
This is for action item, so that we can budget, so that we can start working on the budget. And there may be action items, I'm pretty sure there's an action item. Yeah, there are action items.
Yep.
One quick one. You mentioned that when we were talking about the coordinator director potion, you said years of teaching experience, but I presume that it says underneath your experience in the same or similar position. So not necessarily someone being saying, I've been a teacher for this many years and I want to do this.
Right, yeah, it wouldn't be that. It says grant up to five years of prior experience in the same or similar position and or duties. So it doesn't mean that they have six years of teaching experience and they will be placed on step six or step seven. So it would be in similar or the same position. Again, I go back to, this has to be made clear that in other places, that position may have not a different title, but similar duties. So that's why we have to consider that.
And?
And there's a 2 and a 3%.
Sure.
2% is safe, the 3% is stretching it and not as.
And something has to be cut in order for these to go into?
Something has to be cut regardless, whether you are putting this or not, something has to be cut.
Okay.
And there'll be, yes, so something would have to be cut regardless.
Be shuffled in that budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
So whether you use this or not, we have to make cuts for next school year, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions? No, okay. Next, move on to the next item. We have three board members who will have their terms expire in the next three months. And so as we normally do in customary to our board, we ask those people who are seated if they are considering the remainder of us to re- the remainder of us to reappoint them on the board. So I'm just going to ask the question, for those who are here, Nora Lopez, would you like to be considered, um, once your term expires?
Um, have you planned to be considered? I'd say I'm also...
You're on the, you're on the fence?
Yes, I'm on the fence.
Okay. So that's a maybe. Mr. Roberts?
Oh, I would definitely like to be considered.
Thank you very much. And, um, Mr. Val is not here today, but we'll make sure that we get a response from him.
She actually gave us a response.
She's, yes, she's not here and she is out sick, she has fever.
Okay.
Uh, she has a fever, so she said to, um, let the board know that she has a high level of interest to be reconsidered or that she would like to continue.
We have those three positions, two and a half. Okay, thank you very much for, uh, for your interest and then we'll put that in the mix. The next item is to, um, hear from members who have submitted applications for board positions. Um, and we're going to devote some time here to hear from each one of them. Um, and we, what do you want to type? Okay, so how about we devote three to five minutes max for each one of the applicants, um, to share with us part of their application and so on, their interest and so on and so forth. So we'll just go down the line here, Casey Buck.
Hello and good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you guys, the board members, parents, and teachers that might be in attendance tonight. I appreciate, you know, all of our dedication to the Oasis learning community. I've been invited here tonight, um, by the administration and the board of Oasis to present my application as a candidate for the UCM board. My name is Stacy Buck, most of you guys know me. Um, I have a child here who's in first grade, but I've been a part of this learning community for about three years in different capacities. Um, teaching, volunteering, um, you know, doing, you know, serving on the OCC. I'm a voting member actually on the OCC. Um, and I feel that I can help to make a difference for students and their families. Um, I have spent countless hours, um, building the relationships with parents and teachers and students here at Oasis and quite a fixture around here it seems like. And, um, and I build those relationships and I have that trust with them, that they, they trust me to make sound decisions, both concerning education and, you know, the social and emotional needs of the students as well as the needs of the teachers. Um, I am currently, like I said, a voting member. I've lived in Salinas for twenty-plus years. I've worked in education for probably ten years around Salinas, either tutoring or for different school districts. And, um, I have a lot of different relationships in education, not just with Salinas City, but also, um, first mayor's house. And there's lots of things I see that could be great for Oasis. Um, and I could be able to do that, um, if I have a voice on the board. Um, and like I said, the families, they've spent that time to build that trust and, um, and they respect my judgment concerning their education with their children because they know that I am an educator, I'm well-versed in common core, um, I have a master's in education, and I have my own child and have plaid dates with these parents and we do things together. And so it's not just, you know, the board is, you know, stranger, this is another friend. And, you know, we're parents together, we're, you know, same thing with the teachers. I've worked with some of these teachers at other schools and other capacities. Um, my priority of serving at any capacity that would waste this is to make sure that the students are at the forefront of any decisions that are made regarding our learning community. In order to be sure that we're doing the best to do right by our students, it's crucial that we include parents and educators on the board, um, especially parents of current students. Because, you know, I've got five more here who's in first grade, so I've got some time here. Um, and if anyone knows what's best for our students, I think it's always the teachers and the parents. Um, we're the ones that spend the most time, you know, in the trenches every day, you know, six to seven hours as a teacher and then parents, you know, put in the most hours. Um, I'm excited that the board is finally looking for some new members to diversify and bring new ideas to the table and new voices. And I have a genuine interest in making the best choices for our students here at Oasis. So I hope you will consider my application. As like I said, I'm kind of a fixture here, so you guys kind of stuck with me for the next five years at least. So thank you for your time and I appreciate that consideration.
Thank you.
And we have, um, Gustavo Hernandez.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
So, um, I have a super good idea para que nos platique un poquito acerca de su solicitud para ser un miembro de esta mesa directiva y van a traducir lo que usted dice y lo van a aplicar en todos los años.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Más que nada, yo estoy interesado o... Formar parte a la preocupación de la educación de mi hijo.
Part of the board because...
La educación, estoy preocupado con la educación de mi hijo.
Because I worry about my one, so... Okay, about my child's education.
Thank you, please.
Yeah.
They're still not understanding.
Okay, how can here one in Minnesota?
Me gustó la escuela por las actividades que tiene el desarrollo, pero tengo ciertas preocupaciones en cuanto a los problemas que están enfrentando académicamente de los maestros, las clases de maestros, los problemas.
Teachers, the problems.
He visto preocupaciones en otras áreas que no tienen nada que ver con la educación de los niños.
Children's education.
He visto también personas, o como personas, miembros que ya no están en sus hijos, que dices tal vez ya no es la misma preocupación, nada más estar, tal vez tomando decisiones por algún...
And they taking this decision, or making decisions.
Tomando decisiones por el cargo que tiene, pues, no, por el compromiso que tengan por sus hijos o por la educación.
Children of their education.
No. Si, más que nada, me preocupaba, es, mi preocupación es la educación, pues.
My concern is the education.
Enfocarnos en tomar de buenas decisiones para lograr que esta escuela se vaya adelante. Y otra persona, mi hijo va empezando, no quisiera que él se quedara en un nivel medio así como están considerándoles a la escuela que tiene un buen nivel académico.
Because right now, according to, I don't know what, uh, they don't have a very good academics.
No sé qué más.
I don't know what else to say.
No, más hacer una preocupación por la educación.
Those are my concerns, the education, focus on the education.
Gracias, thank you.
And Jackie?
Hello, I unfortunately didn't prepare anything. I got the call and I was in Mexico on a business trip, so I just arrived yesterday.
I'm hoping you're in some beach somewhere.
I was in Cancún.
Look, I didn't say that.
I really was, but it was a work trip.
I'm going back to that.
I have to say, so I just arrived yesterday. Um, so I'm Jacqueline Vazquez. Um, I am a parent of two children here at Oasis. Um, I am currently vice president of operations of a very company here locally. Um, I serve on the Grower-Shipper Board as well. I'm also on the Junior Board of the Grower-Shipper Foundation. Um, I consult with various charitable organizations. Um, I have, you know, training in negotiations and lean and, um, I don't have experience in the education department. Um, I hope to acquire it with, through my children. Um, I think for me, the reason why I really want to be considered for the board is I feel working together with the parents, with the teachers, with the OCC, we really can get together and build a better school for our kids, for their future, for the community. Salinas is in need of a school like Oasis. There isn't one available. Um, I was in both ends of, I was in public school for a very long time and then I moved to private school. I see both sides when making the decision of where to put my kids in school. It was a tough call. Um, I wanted a public school for the, for the worldly view, for them, for my children to be able to, I think that's part of my base, that we were able to see a little bit of everything in a public school. But the fear of what public school is stopped me. And, and private school also, I was in that world and that can be a little scary also. So Oasis was a choice for me and it continues to be the choice for me and for our two children. Um, but I think we have some work to do. We have some work to do as a board, um, as parents, to start building that trust, to start building those relationships and make it to where it's not, it's not a fight, to make it where it's true teamwork and make it to where this can run as a school that I know it was meant to. And the reason why it attracted me, the, everything that's in the bylaws and in the mission statement is the reason why parents like me choose a school. But I think for a lot of reasons, I think teacher shortages, um, economic recessions, a lot of things happen and I think we've slowly gotten away from that. Um, but I think in working together, I think we really can make this school be amazing. I say that without really, I believe it. So I hope you consider my application.
Yours too.
Any questions for me?
Yes. Sorry, I have a question for someone.
I didn't prepare anything, so please ask questions.
Okay, you said you have served or you have not served on board?
I am not on this board.
On, on, on any board.
Yes, I am a junior board member of the Grower-Shipper Association. I am a board member of the Grower-Shipper Foundation. I am a consultant with United Way of Santa Cruz and I am also a consultant with Wellalupa Pregnancy Outreach, so, yes.
Okay, so how often do they meet?
Um, Wellalupa Pregnancy is as needed. Um, Grower-Shipper Foundation and Grower-Shipper Association is once a month. Um, Grower-Shipper Association is every first Monday. Grower-Shipper Foundation is every third Tuesday, but they're during work hours.
Locally?
Locally, I, yes, I'm, um, all the businesses anywhere usually around Salinas are in a lot of them.
How are you, you've been on so many boards and...
I don't think to be in another, love me. Because I...
It's varies and I, I travel, you know, like I said, I travel for work.
Yes.
I...
I don't...
My husband is a great support system and there's a lot of things that I, like right now, you know, he's, he's helping with, with the kids. I think we both know where we want our lives to be and where our children's lives. Um, so it's important that we, for me, especially as working at a farm, just the people, I have about a thousand employees under me and so their needs, um, what they miss, um, just the demographic that they hit is really important. And just being the director of operations, if I don't participate in these boards, I don't actively, I don't have a role in change. So it's really important. I can't just walk, you know, I have to walk the walk and talk the talk. And so, and, and being in the role and not participating in those things makes me feel a little bit of a hypocrite, so I have to, in order to say, I try, I try to make it better. And so I think same goes for the school. I think that there is some change needed. That's not a critique, that's just, I think, an observation. And I think if I don't participate in boards or participate in maybe more parent meeting, I would feel like I'm not, I'm not working with the change. I'm just acknowledging it, but that doesn't do anybody any good.
How long have you had your children here?
Um, my daughter is in third grade and she started kindergarten here. She's been the three years. And my son is in transitional kindergarten.
Any other questions?
Again, sorry to turn up preparing.
No, thank you.
No, thanks.
Thank you, please, no, no.
Okay. Any question, yes?
I did have a question and I know I didn't get a chance to ask the Casey Buck and who was Sarah, who also presented the comment. Uh, the OCC approved by law's article eleven, conflict of interest policy. Loyalty should be first to the OCC. OCC members should not belong to another organization affected by OCC decisions. OCC members shall not belong to another organization that impacts OCC decisions, outcomes, or operations. So I want the board to consider that, um, you know, Casey Buck belongs to the OCC, so I don't know how that would be addressed, and I also know this is what is on the OCC. So that will have to be addressed as well to make sure there's no conflict of interest of any type. I just want to put it out there for discussion and consideration for the board to look into that or put an address to this board and how that would be addressed to avoid that conflict of interest policy. Article eleven of the law and new laws.
Thank you for that comment. Any questions? Any questions for anyone else? Okay, keep quiet. Let's move on to six point five. A proposal from Evanderberg for twenty eighteen nineteen school year consulting services.
Okay, this is my part.
Yes. And a reminder, Evanderberg is the consultant that works with us to meet charter requirement for the... You have got this.
That is correct, yes, 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 yes. Okay, so I have, let's see here. See. Okay, so that would be on page thirty-one of eighty-four. And Evanderberg is a consultant hired by the board to provide, um, services for our MOU with Alsalina School District. And this would be his third term with us. Um, so far, he has provided support to administration, to the leadership team, uh, and to the teachers in the classroom, guidance on academic data-driven decisions. And he wants to continue working with us, we'd like to continue working with him. Um, the support he has provided has been enormous and also the guidance. The goal was, and it still is, for him to help build capacity from within so that eventually we can do it on our own without all of his intervention at this time that he's providing. So that would be the goal. Um, and we'll, we're getting there. Uh, we do have, uh, conference meetings with him, at least I do frequently. He comes in to visit our site. He is planning on visiting Oasis sometime in May and then again June, June sometime in June, so that we can plan for the next year. And this would be in alignment with our MOU. And the level of international services, I should say, the level of services is decreasing year by year, uh, which is the goal, is to end up with us doing it on our own without these services.
And the contract amount?
It's thirty thousand, it's on page...
Right, what's, according to nine?
What's that?
Organized six fifty, so it's here. So does that...
Estimated total thirty, I see thirty, I see estimated total on page five.
Okay. No, I'm just, my question was, is that less than last year's?
It's less than last year, yes, oh, I'm seeing it's a lot less.
Okay.
So estimated for is on page five, which is page thirty-five of A four. And that's estimated for thirty thousand. And that would be services, twenty-six eight hundred, and estimated expenses, three thousand two hundred. He submits his receipts for reimbursement. So it's less than last year and way less than the year before.
Okay, considerably.
Considerably, yes.
And...
This is a lot less because we do a lot more things on our own, because we don't have to do those things now.
And does he work with someone in the school district?
No, he only works with us.
With us and then we report to the school district?
Yes, yeah, he only works with us and for us.
Okay.
Yeah. But he does bring a Naiz, a Naiz Kampa, a Naiz Kampa who is an EOB expert. So it's, that services paid out of the contract amount. So he's subcontracting, pays that person.
And the school district is fine with the services that he's providing?
Yes, so far there hasn't been any objection or, yeah, no way objection us.
Any questions from anyone? So, Mike?
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 I guess it's more for, for Lucy. Um, I presume that you're the first one around putting this up in, into action.
Yeah.
How's it being received by the teachers?
I mean, I think the first year was shocking because it was so new, like from the data to like cycle improvement and setting a goal and working towards it. I think by now, it's pretty much like, not becoming norm, but working towards us.
Why is it...
And it's a lot less of them being on campus now, so they get a lot more from me than they do from them. She does come more than he does, so Naiz will come and she'll do all... So Anais will come and she'll do observations and so far it's been working pretty well.
Do people still do the walkthroughs?
The learning walks? Yeah, and I'll have support, um, with planning PD and, you know, if I have like a coaching situation, they're there to help with what I should do as a leader in that role and as a coach in that role. So I think they are well viewed by our teachers.
As long as it seems to be becoming part of the culture, it's, it's be well received. And I guess it's a good thing.
Yeah.
His initial report was very favorable.
Yes. He's, he's here to provide guidance and support, not to dictate what we need to do. That was the concern at the beginning and we made it clear what we expected and what we needed. And he has been able to deliver along with Anais Kampa, um, who's now helping with English language development. Support.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Okay. Thank you for that. Um, now we're on to item seven, administration. And then it's just a lot of updates from administrators. So let's...
Yes.
We're just gonna provide those.
So hopefully you have time to read from seven point one to seven point six. Are there any questions from seven? If, if, that would be on page six of the agenda, so the attachments, so you go all the way up. So it would be page six. So you have to go all the way back. It will be, so it's probably recommended to go back. Are there any questions from the board about what's in those items?
So the Saturday Academy, are we, how are we recovered in terms of loss?
We did really well for P two, better than, than we had thought. We're in two. Um, we did hold Saturday Academy the first week of straight break. So that helped out a lot.
Right. So at this point, we don't need to recover anymore because you've already submitted the P two?
No, we still have any here.
Okay.
So we still will have Saturday Academy.
How many more will we, how many other opportunities?
We have two more. One in, actually this coming Saturday and then one in, no, actually two more after that. I believe two or three. I know one, two for sure. So one coming up, this Saturday, and then at least another one scheduled. So a couple more to recover for, for that window, for the end of the year report, for any absences between P two and end of the year. So it has been successful.
Okay. But we have two chances to really make up something good, right? A good round.
And this will...
I mean, everyone's putting their eggs in the basket to help make sure that that gets... I mean, it's not going to get us where we need to be because of the number of FTA account, the account that we have, but definitely this recovery will...
Yeah, and we're doing, uh, teachers are helping and the offices help with independent study packets for those who are absent and those who aren't able to get a independent study packet for whatever reason, then we offer Saturday Academy.
Okay. Any other questions from any of those items?
I was hoping to have seven point five completed for you.
I was just asking.
But the teachers, not everyone got back to me on the future of information that I requested from them. I believe I got three out of ten. Oops. Uh, even though I followed up with reminders and they were busy. So I will follow up again and ask them to please submit it because I need time to put the data together. So, but I do have at least three of them. So I will get started with that as of tomorrow and then wait for the other seven for the next meeting to discuss, yeah. So I didn't have it ready for you.
In terms of the place structure?
The place structure, right now, the city, um, City of Studies and Building and Planning Department has reviewed the plans. They returned it back to Peter Cassadon and her, and his partner, um, which is her and Barbara. So they reviewed it, they had comments and wanted information back about the restaurant signs and about the place structure itself. So the provider was able to provide that and they came and inspected our facility, took pictures and went back and we submitted again. So they, the City of Studies, the Building and Planning Department has received our plans for the second time with the revisions, all noted, all changed. So I'm not sure what, what the purpose was, but they gave us pictures of the signs on, for the restaurants, how they go. I have no idea. The City of Salinas, I, I don't ask you to do this thing.
Special crazy.
No, no special reason or no particular reason, even the architect was confused about that. But we said, okay. So that was, we submitted back to them as requested. And no additional fee luckily. Uh, one resubmission is included, so no additional fees at this time. And the requirements were minimal, um, additional information required was minimal. So I don't anticipate any more, hopefully, uh, any major requirements that we cannot meet. So we're moving forward. It's moving right on as expected.
And then Pete has a question about seven point four.
Yes.
How long has that, that might have extended and how many we have the confirmation?
Erica can answer that, but I can tell you that we announced that on Parents Square, we sent letters home and we also announced it during teacher family conferences. Uh, she can give you the numbers, the exact numbers, but we also made phone calls. So we've done a repeat, family, and in the order that was given, it was offered family teacher conferences, a letter to the families and a reminder by the teachers to the families. And the window, the reminder was sent to the Parents Square before conferences, during conferences, and after conferences. Then Erica extended the window after free break, another two weeks till the twentieth, last Friday. And even until today, she's still enrolling families who forgot. Uh, but last Friday I saw the office staff making calls like crazy to the families saying, or Thursday or Friday, hey, we had a call from you, what's going on? They had sent a letter prior to that window week. So hoping that families would have responded by then, but the ones who didn't, they followed up with a phone call and I asked them to make notes on the file uh, so that we have a record of all the different attempts to reach them so they can re-enroll because the issue has been that we made all of these attempts via letters, via calls, via reminders, Parents Square, teacher reminders to the parents. And then we dropped them because we don't care from them because we have families waiting and then they claim they, and they claim they never knew about the deadline to re-enroll. So Erica can answer about questions, I mean about numbers exactly. Yeah, numbers.
Numbers, we have a hundred and...
AD, you said a hundred and eighty-five. Hundred eighty-five students.
Our returners, returners.
Returners.
Our waitlist is very, very...
Oh.
Waiting to accommodate, is it okay?
Oh, yeah, it's not. No, no.
It's unhelpful.
Unhelpful.
So we really need a, a, this, a unique decision for those who...
Yeah.
Right, right. Which, we have thirty-three left. Um, Emily Laddie started making phone calls until she left again today. Uh, we'll continue again tomorrow. I did personally hand deliver letters to parents who came to the after school. So I was able to hand deliver them. Um, they still have to go on decline and decline, but they don't want a spot just so that we have record of it. So regardless, we leave them to one. So we're approaching...
Yeah. They have to accept or decline either way. So we have paper trail documentation of their acceptance or refusing because of the prior allegations that...
Well, yeah.
We'll remove them off the list.
We need to know for, you guys need to know our recruitment.
And that's my next call is to the attorney, um, tomorrow, is to ask for what's the next legal action because we have made a attempt to reach them. It's for them to just log in and decline or...
By a certain point, we can, we can not decline.
Yeah.
We need to...
We can.
Yeah.
I mean, at a certain point, you have to go out and recruit.
I knew it. Correct. I mean, people, those that have come in, and we do have a lot coming in and we're taking all of those. We did another little lottery, a lot automatic.
So just to suggest, just make a plan for a cutoff date that is going to work for you and then everybody go up to recruit for the next year. We can't simply wait for...
Families who are waiting, we do, we do know we have openings for kinders. So all those kinders have been accepted for next year. Is the eligibility levels that we are not sure of because if, let's say...
Well, that's normal with the ways it's...
That's the biggest challenge is the eligibility levels. Is the kinders, it's no problem, we know who's moving.
I think if you send that notification, this is your absolute final deadline and then you move forward from there.
Yep.
From, from just like whenever you notice this, it's like, um, um, this is what we are sending you this letter. We need, if you will, we need you to respond by such a date. If you don't respond by such a date, that will be considered a decline of enrollment or re-enrollment. So then you already have been writing, they receive a letter that they have by such a date to, um, re-enroll and if they don't act upon that date, then it's taken as a decline. So then you can enroll the...
So that is what we're waiting, yeah. Because that is an action of itself.
Maybe it's your acceptance after phone calls or, I mean, do they usually say, oh, I forgot, yes, sign me up or do they just let, give me a few more days?
After that last phone call, after last week's phone call, we got quite, we were, when we gave you the list, I had a hundred and twenty-one to help us with that. Um, there was eighty...
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
And we're down to thirty-three. So it's a lot.
So, I mean, it's a good effort, right?
Yeah.
But at a certain point, you just have to...
Yeah, you just have to...
It, I mean, the next year's budget is depending on, everything's depending on numbers that, before we leave.
Cut out date.
Okay. So we'll send those letters and you will update if we can proceed and replace those things.
Okay. Any other questions on, I did seven, any of those? Okay, let's move on to item eight, unfinished business, actions and resolutions. Um, eight point one, we have tax forms that we need to review and approve.
Yes, the tax forms is, they start, um, on page forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight. Um, and there's only one correction that I spoke with the auditor about something they might have noticed on page seven of the report, which is on page forty-four of eighty-four. And that is Pete's writer name is not on there.
I have a problem with that.
What?
Are you...
And then Jorge. So Jorge is not on there and Pete is not on there. So I emailed him and I put it forward, like...
Go be an amendment somewhere.
Email and I said, hey, you can see two board members. And, um, and I mean, your last name isn't Stowe, isn't it? You know, is it?
Who's?
I said, obviously, is your last name Stowe?
I was, I was actually joking because that's always something that happens. But now it's spelled correctly.
It is this time?
Yes.
Oh, good. Oh, okay. So corrected. Uh, so I asked him to please, um, make that correction and he said, yes. He will go ahead and, and make that correction. Uh, and submit it by the twenty-eighth. He has to submit it by the twenty-eighth. So obviously he will have to sign the, uh, form for him to submit it by the, by the twenty-eighth. So I have it written right here, it's on California E final return authorization for extent organizations. So...
Who, who prepared this?
Pardon?
Who's the preparator?
Uh, it is the auditing, is the auditing firm.
Oh, right, right.
The ones that do the financial audit.
Right.
And they were here to do the audit. By the way, they were here and, uh, who made, show me everything that was requested of us. Uh, because we have, for years have team audits, so we're going to make sure we continue with that. So he came in and requested some information. So it's Tim, Timson, Larsen, Allen, LP. So that firm.
If I have questions, call them.
Call them, yeah. Tim, Allen.
I also know a couple of mispronounced names.
Oh, and I, I mentioned that to, to, to them. I said, oh, by the way, our English teacher, we're going to find some spellings. And he said, it's a financial audit, not a...
Yeah, that's right.
English firm. I'm like, I get it, but just understand, we have people who pay attention to that. So he said, just to make, he said, well, tell me what page and we'll correct it. I said, okay, well, let me, Michael, let us know.
All right. Any questions from anyone?
So...
Okay. Assuming these are standard forms.
Yeah, that's...
Right. There's, there's a list on my last side.
Somewhere, somewhere is this...
Probably the second.
Right.
What page, so we can correct it, so they can correct it.
No.
What page is it in?
Uh, our page or their page?
Uh, their page, because I'm going to refer to their report in their page.
This is other, other income statement form one ninety-nine, other income statement one? I don't mind, I don't have a one page.
It's, it's in the middle of the page. The page number of their report is in the middle of, on the bottom of the page. Bottom of the page. It's all...
Oh, it's not there?
It's not there.
Oh, what's the next one?
Nine one.
It's the last page?
It's the second to the last page.
Second to the last.
Yes.
Okay, second to last. So I'm going to look it up and point it out to him. Mike, if you find those mispronounced names, please, you know, I don't think I mentioned those names.
Resolution of names.
I didn't check the map.
Donna did though. Donna, Casey, and Kim checked his map, or their map.
Okay, that's, that was going to be my question.
No, Donna, this has been reviewed by Kim, Donna, and Casey, and I. So the four of us have reviewed this report and the map is correct. Yeah.
I think I understand. Okay. Any questions, uh, about this, these forms? If I, if I can get a motion to approve these forms? ISO move? Okay. Can I get a second please?
I can second.
Okay, second. Oh, yeah. Just, just make sure that all my last names are spelled correct.
I remember.
Unless, yeah, unless there's something that they need to...
By now they should...
Come after, come after that other person.
It's one of those two Cs.
Okay. Can I, I'll as a favor approving these tax forms as presented with corrections of last name? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, pass. Okay. Um, the Oasis volunteer policy. Are there any other questions about that? These have all the suggestions that were provided.
All there were suggestions and recommendations that you can see has been added in blue or has been added in red. Uh, it shows the different kinds of, when I added things, um, to show that it was added as a new addition. Uh, so those are all the recommendations from different people, um, teachers, OCC. At the last OCC meeting, they were not able to open the last version. And so, um, they were not able to review that one. I sent it to Parents Square and I just found out tonight that they were unable to open it. I can see it, I don't know why they can't see it, but I'm sure there's a glitch or something in the system so that I have to, I can fix it. However, this was also sent to the community, the attachment with the agenda at least seventy-two hours prior to, uh, the community via Parents Square. I'm hoping that it was accessible via Parents Square and it was uploaded to the website, the agenda with the attachments. So it was accessible only seventy-two hours in advance. Now, if you, the OCC feels that they, they really need to take a look at it at the next meeting. It's here, it's available. Uh, I can see why it didn't open the last time and we send it, but it's here accessible and we can postpone that. It's up to the president of the OCC.
Cap, do you have any comments on, did you, did everyone get to, because that was one of the concerns, that was one of the suggestions that we get here.
Yeah, we, uh, when we, when I got it, um, at the meeting, I had gotten it a couple, I think like a day or two before, and when I tried to open it at the meeting, it wouldn't open. And then I didn't find out that it didn't open on Parents Square until somebody actually let me know earlier today, hey, what about that volunteer policy? How come it's not showing up? And I was like, let me take a look. Like, I'm sorry, I didn't see. And then when I did try and open it on one of, I guess where it has the, um, you know, on Parents Square it says documents?
Yes.
And I went to go and open it and I was like... And I went to go and open it and I was like, oh, my gosh, it just shows an Adobe thing on there. So it doesn't open.
It doesn't.
So I don't, so I'm gonna assume that none of us got to see it or the school. So my personal recommendation would be maybe give it a couple more days, repost it and let the community know, sorry that it didn't open, but here it is. If you need any other, you have any other feedback, you know, because we don't want, and this is my opinion personally, you don't want to say, yes, let's approve and then you're gonna get parents angry because they didn't get to see the final, you know, the final thing, because it doesn't open up, you know. That's, and I would just recommend that, yeah. I mean, a couple more days of whether it'll be to next meeting, but it needs to be accessible to everybody and it was not, so.
Thank you for that.
And then you, Dave, would have shared also at the next OCC meeting.
Yes, at the next OCC, which is the first Tuesday.
I don't want to back up, I tried to open that same document and I had the same problems. And I was thinking to me, I needed to update my stuff, but I was still, I was still having trouble with it.
Okay.
I can definitely repost that we sent, I was gonna work this bridge. But every, all the attachments, did you try, did anybody try opening any of the other attachments that I sent throughout for you?
I can try right now.
I did, I had, that was the only one I seemed to have trouble with.
Trouble with? Okay, so maybe just sometimes was for corrupt the damage or that's what it's. It is damage or this has a virus, I don't know. But maybe that's what it is. I can open it and see it because I tried it, so I can see on my end, but I don't know why. But I could try again and then call somebody saying, hey, can you try on your end and see if it's, yeah, it opens this time? I can do that, it's not a video.
Is there a reason why it's still on the, this law firm's letterhead?
Uh, no, once it's approved, we can remove that, we can remove.
I'd much rather have it removed before.
Oh, okay.
It's really a school policy and not their document.
Remove, uh, cool, okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone this until the parents, OCC primarily and any other parents, they'd like to provide feedback. With this definition that we get those ahead of time so that once it goes into, once we put it on the agenda, it's been reviewed by any groups, it's been reviewed by administration and once we get it, we, so we don't delay this policy.
And we would appreciate any, anyone who's unable to open any documents to immediately send a message via parent square, via email, via any way or call the office and just let us know right away so that we can then try to fix the problem or find out what the issue is.
Yeah, you can always comment, like, I know I see the comments when I post and I try to reply to something that I need to address. So that would be.
That would be useful.
Unfortunately, I didn't open the parent square one, it was just the day of the OCC. And I said, hey, Nina, I can't open this document, but I was just informed by one of the parents earlier today.
I will repost and it's gonna be one attachment with the English and Spanish version in the same. Because that's what I did this time, I emerged those two because of the way Adobe works. It only accepts top files regardless of how large they are. If you want page or one hundred pages, twelve files individually. So I added those two to make the one. So it English and Spanish all together, so it counts as one file, so for the Adobe purposes. So yes, we do that.
All of the favor to postpone this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next one is the Oasis conditions for classroom and school visitation and reviewable policy.
I think it's the same thing, they were not able to open it.
So that's another one that wasn't opened, so it wasn't just that one.
Well, it wasn't the same, it wasn't the same file.
All the.
I merged them two, I merged them together, so they're one file.
Can we just agree that the motion serves for both of these documents? Or do you want any motions?
I move that we put this second document off to next.
Okay, second please.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, the certificate salary schedule for twenty eighteen. Well, so we heard the, so now it's a thirty, it's a three percent, right?
It's a three percent increase and it's for the next two years. And I gave my arguments of why I put instead of a two percent for teachers before. And do you have any questions for me before we make the decision?
So it's one point five percent per year or three percent?
It's a three percent now for the next two years. So it would apply that same schedule.
For two years.
For two years. So it would be applicable as of next year, two years.
Two years, yes. So nineteen, no, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty.
So that's why it's for two years, two thousand and eighteen.
Intervene motion, anyone have any? Can I get, let's get a motion out there.
So.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, let's talk a little bit. I, so I just don't want something cut completely that is vital to offset. Yes, please keep in consideration that. Let's win that next, well, it's a consideration for all of you when we are putting together the next budget. And we look at this because now this expense is gonna be there for us. That we seriously consider what is, what is not gonna be there next year because of this small, insignificant increase for our teaching staff.
And it will be an ongoing expense, we have to put that into consideration. And we definitely prioritize like physical education, for instance, engineering, technology, those are some must have. So we do have to look at the budget and priorities very closely and we can plan the next budget in the next month.
Any questions? Nope, okay, all is in favor of approving a three percent increase in certain salaries. Please say aye.
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 Aye. No against? Okay, there you go. Somebody, let our teaching staff know, I think I have a three percent salary increase. All right, let's move on to the next item. Salary increases for all other positions. Is that, all other positions are support staff and administration, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Moved, can I get a second? Seconded, sorry, by Nora. Again, I'm going to state on record that this is gonna impact the budget, which is gonna be impacted by our recruitment of students. So everyone's gonna have to put their, their working hat on just a little bit tighter to ensure that we have a full, all our classrooms are full. Otherwise, what we're doing right now is going to impact a whole bunch of other services and programs that we have. Yes, so.
So the potential consequence is if we, our ADA is not strengthened and if there is that drop in enrollment in ADA, what could happen is you, we have a commitment in a contract with those staff members and we would have to make cuts sometime during the year to balance off that budget. And it would have to be prioritized to the least needed service to the highest. So let's hypothetically say that this needed service was X, then that X goes and then Y, then Z. But something would have to be cut in the middle of the year if that were to be the case. So we would have to work very closely and commitment from everyone with independent study, with salary economy to bring the achievement here. It is certainly not a business, however, we rely on the attendance and it has to be considered when looking at the numbers as a business. And if you can't have a balanced budget, you can't run the school. The rent goes up, PG and E goes up, retirement goes up.
Insurance.
Insurance, health insurance goes up, everything goes up. And if there is already anticipation, the state is looking at cuts as it is. They have already cut SB seven forty because of the number of applicants and it was larger than the funding available. So there was already a cut this year, this year they anticipate more because the number of applicants was greater than the funding available. And other, other factors, elections and repayment, so it's already anticipated. We don't know to what extent. We've been in that situation before, two thousand and eight, I believe, we had these deferrals. There were six month deferrals here and thirty percent here and there. So we were in a difficult financial situation back then. Luckily, our reserves back then kept us out of trouble and then a couple of loans from Bravo Bank. An amortized loan and a little line of credit helped to keep us open and going. But we do need the commitment of the families and what we're adamant about attendance. If we call and have those S S T meetings about attendance, that we call and say, where's your child? Doctor's appointment is a thirty by ten o'clock to be here, bring your child or pick up your child early and take them to the doctor's appointment. We really need it, we really need the child here so that we can get the funding. And it's, you can't just have them show up to the office and then sign them out. That's not okay. They need to actually be here in the classroom, receive an instruction and then of course, take them to the appointments and all the family matters as needed. But be considered, they need to receive instruction and be here, not just show up and sign them out. It's not acceptable.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, all those in favor of approving a two percent increase for all others staff? Please say aye.
Aye.
Give them a raise. So that was.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Let's move on to replacement of the three HVAC units.
Okay, so the conference committee met and Cat was one of the members who was there. We always try to include an OCC member. And a parent was there, another parent, not an OCC member, serial, staff members classified and certificateated and administration was there. Did we have a bulletin this time?
No, I, I, yeah, but I provided a suggestion.
Yes, he provided a suggestion via email. So I reported that to the group and we reviewed two proposals. We reached out to at least three other companies and they declined. Some of them didn't do commercial buildings and Vals, or at least did commercial building, but did not want to come and give us a bid on that, so. Basically.
Okay.
So we went ahead and reviewed and the group selected the one that you see here on the agenda.
So can I get a motion to approve the replacement of the three HVAC units and the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars from all ten perpetration company?
I move that we replace the HVAC unit.
Perfect, can I get a second please? Okay, second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Very well, we had one no.
Why is it that I want to take?
There we go, there we go, don't, don't even start, this is, yeah. Well, thank you very well.
Yeah.
So that passes?
Yeah.
Moving on to the next. It's in the contract. Okay, health insurance stipend for twenty eighteen nineteen school year.
Okay, let me give you a little bit of background, just give me a minute and I can explain. For the past two years, Oasis has offered a health stipend for staff members that have full health insurance coverage. Currently, Oasis offers health coverage only for the employee. If the family wants to, if the employee wants to add one member, it's close to a thousand dollars for one member. If they wanna add two or more, it's over sixteen hundred a month. A month. And that's usually a question I'm asked by potential candidates. And when I give them the amounts to cover a spouse or two or more, a child and a spouse or more than two children, they fall off their seats, like sixteen hundred, so what do I take home? Especially if they're new, entering level positions like beginning teachers at forty two, forty three thousand, they would take less than half their paycheck home. If they were to select to have their family sign up with our health insurance carrier. Other districts, of course, are bigger, they have bigger discounts. So the larger you are, the bigger the discount you get and the better deal. Or they offer options, like cafeteria type of option, options for them, but we don't have that. So we offer this one plan and it's pretty pricey for a family who's, an employee who's making three thousand a month to have sixteen hundred go towards medical insurance. And we know that by the time they make forty some of those three members in the family, they don't qualify perhaps for medical or other public health plans for their children because at that point they're beyond the threshold for how much they could earn. So that is, that was a struggle for us to retain staff members with families, like family, children, spouse or children. So three years ago, I asked that we consider at least a stipend, maybe a four hundred and fifty dollar stipend and we continue this year and I'm asking that we continue for future years. Only two, two staff members have participated in it. The rest took too expensive, four hundred and fifty, the majority has declined and it goes up every year. So the four fifty remained the same because the cost of insurance keeps going. But it was like eight fifteen, the word ran eighty next year, so it'll be like a thousand twenty, something like that. So that stipend has not gone up, but the cost of the insurance has gone up.
And that, and that has been, did it go through Donna to see if there was any either upping it or why, why did we come up with both the resolution? If the cost is going up, but the stipend is remaining the same.
If we had, if we had every member, every full-time employee participating, we could sustain the four fifty. But if we have less than every single one, we could afford upping it a little bit, but it would be up to the board. But I can't tell you how many will participate, I can only tell you right now to participate. In the future, I can't tell you here and there. If you up it to five hundred, it doesn't impact the budget significantly, for instance, but it's going up, it's going this way.
So this stipend is giving to the family who will accept family insurance?
Yes, and it's, so this is added to the paycheck and then the, that's added to the paycheck as if they had earned it. And then the premium amount is deducted from the paycheck.
So actually you get taxed.
They get taxed on it.
It's pre, it should be pre-taxed, all of them.
But they're taxed.
They're taxed on that, right now they're taxed. Right now they're taxed on that.
So we have a delta insurance provider?
We have Anthem Blue Cross. Anthem and we have. DSP. And we don't have Delta, so we have Anthem, something Blue Cross, they're to the Blue Cross. We're looking at them, Delta Dental for a future.
Have we checked any other health, health providers?
We did have, as far as health providers, healthcare providers have been the same, the carrier. The company has been different, we had three before. So we started with one, it was called Small Charter School, something in Bigfield.
We did a, we did a study, yeah, of four, five different companies.
Yes, yes.
This was the best.
The best.
The best options, the best providers around the area and the best cost effectiveness for both participants and. Maybe you should have a period ago, three years, three years ago.
Three years ago, so it's meeting with this company two years, so we now have a contract for the next two years with them.
We have a contract?
We have a contract for the next two years to continue with them. It was the best, the most comparative one. There are very few companies that, and this is through Charter State, oh, by the way, this is through Charter State. So in the same umbrella, but it's kind of a subdivision of that. So it was the best deal we could find out there for a small charter school that has handled employees that are full time. But the health benefits are excellent, deductible is two hundred and fifty dollars and then twenty dollars for co-page and you can go to any specialist, no referral. You just go and pay the twenty dollars, you don't pay higher. And vision is excellent coverage. Dental, we're working on that right now, we're looking at dental, how to improve that coverage.
Okay, so going back to the four hundred and fifty. Donna's been in the conversation about either it stays at that amount or how it impacts the budget.
For this next year, we didn't have a conversation for the stipend of how we could increase it or decrease it. We, the conversation has been keeping it, we didn't have a conversation about increasing it.
And. And in terms of retaining, is this factor into the teaching staff or any of the staff that are staying with us? Is this impacting them? Has it helped, has it not helped? Well, I know it's only two, but.
Does it help, does it not help?
I mean, either we consider bumping this up so that it is truly a benefit to the employees, or if we're gonna vote on something, I think we need to analyze it a little bit more.
I think that's.
To see if this is truly a benefit for the employees or not. Because obviously it hasn't worked, because only two employees took advantage of the benefit.
Also, there's not this amount, it's because of cost.
Right, the cost, I understand, so that's why I'm saying, but just to sort of roll it over because it's an amount, I don't know if that's the best way to go.
So I guess the point is if we up it to a level where more people participate, then we are for it.
Well, but those little benefits that you have to offer, that's why people are happy where they were, I mean, some of them, right? Some of the benefits of, the benefits, right, the benefits, that's why they call it free benefits. Because not, and on top of being in a place where you want to work and so on, you get these benefits that help you in your value, so.
Right.
I'm not saying this is, I think it's a great thing, I'm just saying we should.
It was a great.
If nobody signed up at $450 when the costs were down here, but when they go up here and stuff for the $450, there, those two might even opt out of the benefit.
Right.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense, well, I can tell you that one of the ones who was receiving the benefit when I spoke with this employee, one of her, one of the factors for her when making a decision to stay or leave was the the cost of insurance and what was offered somewhere else, and what's the other pocket.
So here, and I'm gonna just, I'm gonna backpedal a little bit. So when you increase somebody's salary by 2%, right? It's a minimum amount.
Yes.
But when you offer a benefit package to add on, I mean, someone from your family onto insurance at a monthly cost, that is a benefit. And they might say, "I don't need a 2% increase," but I need to get my son or my husband or somebody else on the health insurance. And so I always like to think of what benefit are you really receiving? A 2% is hundreds, like a hundred, $50 to $100 on a monthly basis. But this on a monthly basis, you get somebody to have health coverage, just the, just the knowing that if you need to go to the doctor, someone else in your family's covered, those are, to me, benefits and why people come to the organization to.
Right, so let me have an in-depth conversation with Donna about this, and then we already have a projection of what the compensation is going up to. So let me have that, and I'll come back to you with more data.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, I mean, like, if it is, if only two signed up for $450, and it's, when it goes up, it's gonna be zero.
Right, and if they pass on that, on the motion.
Yeah, so, no, let's revisit this one. Could I get a motion to postpone this until we get a few more long-term time? Okay, second, please. Okay, all those in favor of postponing? I get some more information?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, alright.
Good job.
That's why I have a lot of confusion with other, sorry, so what did I say? Alright. The next one is Harry Josue Reyes, the provisional internship permit for the next second year.
Yes, this is, yes, this is, Josue has been with us for, let's see, two years?
Almost three.
Three, two and a half, almost, almost two and a half years, two years, and it's going to be two and a half years to us. And he wants to continue, he needs time to pass his, some of his requirements for the program. And so we would like to keep, and he has performed satisfactory or exemplary in all areas. And we would like to retain this teacher who is dedicated, devoted, committed, and already trained in what we do and how we do things at Oasis. So he enrolled in an internship program, and he can continue in that internship program after he passes his one exam that has prescriptions to it. He signed up to take it, he has taken it, but he needs to continue taking it. So we are in need of keeping him and continuing now. Also keep in mind that Oasis has made a significant effort to hire and recruit teachers that are fully qualified and committed and responsible for being here and being committed to our community and supporting our community, and all the different things that we do. I always promise something, and I'll make it public, I always say about when I interview staff members, prospective candidates, we offer two things and we always deliver, a lot of work and little pay. They don't make enough for all the work they put in. So Josue is someone that we would like to keep. We have gone to the Hard Knocks Job Fair, we're going tomorrow to another job fair in Monterey, trying to recruit, and it is online through a joint, I have announced it, it's already also, we advertised it in Drive Alita, we advertised it on TV, we have advertised it on radio, all the different ways to recruit, we've done it. Oh, university placement centers, we send it up.
So the question is, why, 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 what are we need to approve right now?
We need to approve him continuing with us for the next academic year, because we still have openings.
What's the difference between him being here last year and this year?
Right now, he has, he has a stip, what's called a staff temporary permit, and that expires June of this year, and is not renewable.
So then.
So he goes into a provisional internship until he passes that exam, then he continues with the internship program during whatever school year, when he asks. This is a one-time, not renewable as well. So he just needs time. So we need to approve this to continue hiring him with another type of permit, a deeper type of permit. He has a stip right now.
I get it.
A stip.
He hasn't passed somebody's test. Okay. Are you guys providing him with any type of support so that at some point we can continue to approve? Right?
Right, yes.
I don't care, he's the best of the best of the best in the world. If he doesn't have the, what we need, then. So are you providing him with some support that he can pass these tests that will make him?
Yes, I have provided him personally some support, and I would be happy to.
Okay.
So we've purchased study guides for that exam. We also, and Isabelle Lucy and I have offered study sessions to provide that support. I do it in mathematics, the other subjects I rather not engage because they will fail. But I definitely provide a supportive mathematics, which is my strength. And Lucy and Isabelle have provided that in other subjects, Isabelle in mathematics as well, and so.
So, I mean, I, I don't wanna talk about this, it's almost a personality, if you may. So I don't wanna discuss particulars, but I just. Questions from the board before I. Any other questions?
So.
So I, I, yeah, I'd be right.
So if this, so I guess, right now we have one, one opening, and we would have two if his position becomes it's not approved, we would have two.
And this, and this provisional internship permit is already approved?
No, it has, it has to be approved by you, so then I fill out the paperwork and send it to CTC. Do they approve, they can still turn it down, they can just say no. So it would have to send it as soon as possible.
But what do you, I can ask this question, why do you approve from the board to make administrative decisions on this?
It is part of the CTC requirement, it's on the CTC guidelines.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, CTC guidelines.
Why am I going to, why are you asking this board to make?
CTC guidelines.
Got it.
If it's not on the list and agenda, they will not, they will send it back. It's a part of, so those requirements that I have to send, there's a list, a long list of requirements.
Alright.
And this is one of them, one of the many. I guess it will be two openings, except one, in this case.
Very well. Can I get a motion from someone to approve the provisional internship permit for Mr. Josue Reyes?
Members not a guarantee, CTC has to approve, and they have a final say.
I see.
Can I get a second, please? It's been seconded, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Can I get any no's?
I'm staying.
It's an extension, alright. Okay. There's an office staff promotion.
And for this, I will ask, I will ask for permission to move myself so that you can make your decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable with this one? Okay. Okay, there's a, there's a request to recommend that we approve the promotion of Office Secretary Clerk, Milani Minis, Administrative Assistant. Is there a motion?
To approve?
Yes. Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, can I put in seconded? Lucy, do you want?
Well, I think I've already mentioned this to you guys, but I think I made the suggestion to promote with it because Donna is familiar and works very closely with Erica, and given that Dan is gone, it just makes a lot more sense for her to train and just, I know what she's capable of, and I know what she's working with. I mean, right now, she's a professional.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, yes? Alright, so we have to take it, any texts, any further comment back, please? We have announcements, and Lucy, can you take those announcements? I can make it out of this mic. The new family orientation will be April 25th, May 4th, at 6:30 in this room. There's a barbecue and community fair on Saturday, May 19th, 2018. Level and logic sessions will be May 3rd in Spanish, and May 17th in English, and May 31st in Spanish, 6:30. And Saturday Academy will be on May 26th, 2018.
From nine to one.
From nine to one, okay. Anything else for new to order from anyone? Okay, thank you, everyone, we're calling this meeting at 8:38 PM. Thank you very much.